And I just, last night, I was saying to people, we need to make sure the community at large knows where we're at.
Yep.
And Peter said, well, why don't you put a letter in the ledger, which I'll also do, and then I thought, well, this is must-watch TV. Doesn't the entire town watch at least the first 15, 20 minutes?
Yes, I'm sure everybody, yes.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, October 8th. We are working with the Skeleton Crew here tonight, but the meeting must go on. Michael Ray and Amanda were not available. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with the requirements of the open-meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open-meeting law. We can begin tonight with public comment. Are there any public comments from the Board?
No.
I have not, none.
I just want to thank the Agricultural Commission for all the work that went into organizing the agricultural fair this past weekend. I was out of town, so unfortunately, I could not attend, but I heard from several residents that it was a great event. One resident even called me during the fair to tell me how great it was, and I got a bunch of pictures, so I'm sure that residents would like to see it happen again next year, and it's really great to see that we're organizing more of these community events. So, thank you to the Agricultural Commission, and the Historical Commission as well, who was there and did a lot of work for that, for all the work that they did. All right, are there any public comments from the public?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burden.
Yes. George Burden, 39 Cortland Circle, just wanted to address the board again. I mean, keep coming each week until a public records request that I've, multiple public records requests, as you know. You're in compliance, a compliance situation with the state of not providing me those documents. These documents and so forth are concerning an abusive zoning board of appeals that we feel, where residents of a piece of property have not been notified. Just want to raise that. October 23rd is an extension to this hearing. Would any residents to Lunenburg should come, especially anybody that lives in an HOA or has common land as a corporation, like the Hickory Hills Lakes? Anybody that has common land that is owned by multiple homeowners should attend this meeting and see how abusive it is. On top of it, I also want to raise the question about a document request we've asked for about, we have concerns about a shared septic system we have on our property that goes into some conservation land, or kind of set aside as a non-buildable land. It's 100 acres. We have concerns that land was polluted due to a private, another septic service, a septic service provider that was found by the state of Massachusetts and indicted and found guilty of switching septic samples in our septic systems, along with two others in the state. We feel that there could be some bigger problems in our neighborhood, in our association with that, due to that septic system, and we have great concerns for individuals that live on Arbor Street of their water systems and any of their wells that could have possibly been polluted. I think this is a very concerning issue for the town of Lunenburg, and you know we've been coming, and we've been attacked about when we were trying to get these documents, and we've been trying to be pushed out of town around all of this that we've been raising. I just want to bring, take it to the end. We've asked Mr. Alonso recently if he wanted to reach out and talk to us. I've heard no response. Just raising these concerns, and I'm going to continually to raise these concerns to the town and to the board as we address and get through this, but we've been ignored, we've been pushed back. As everybody knows, our life has gotten worse as we raise these concerns to the town, and we have some very good evidence and so forth that will connect things together in the end, and we are very just shocked that the town wants to go through and spend the money when we went to them, and how many resources we could have saved, and mouths we could have fed, when we came to the town manager two years ago and asked to speak about these concerns. We then went to Mr. Jeffries because we didn't get a response from the town manager, and Mr. Jeffries then turned on us 180 degrees, as most of residents and the top, and the board have heard here, about the situation that I brought up over the last few months. And we're starting to, you know, get a hold of this. We were very confused at the very beginning of what was going on. We were, this was sewn in purposely, it caused confusion to us. We are putting it together, we have pretty much what's gone on here, and I would suggest that we meet as a, as a, as a family, my family, the five of us, and the board, and do something about this, because this is a serious situation that we're concerned with, and we're getting abused by the town still. And the abuse, what I mean by that, is protection of these trustees that are having a problem in our HOA. It's very evident that there's some protection there, protection of a shed that's on common land. That's what the zoning board of appeals is about. Very abusive, very abusive, and there's multiple other things I can go into that are abusive, and people should understand. I was attacked on a street that I never said anything or touched anybody. This is a serious situation for the town that I say, we get together and talk together, and sit down and talk. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Burden, for your public comment. Are there any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to announcements, and I have two from my phone. Hold on one second. Yard waste. The yard waste disposal dates for this fall are October 26th to December 14th, excluding Thanksgiving weekend, and trick-or-treating hours will be Thursday, October 31st, Halloween, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Any other announcements?
I do have one, because it was brought up by a letter to the board, and then it was noted in, on Facebook, that there was an error on one of the postings for the special town meeting that indicated it was at 5:00. That is an error. It is at 7:00, as it always is, so that town meeting will be on Tuesday. What is the exact date? I don't have it in front of me. The 12th, November 12th, at 7:00 p.m.
Yep, thank you. Yep, and that was just posted on the website, so the town clerk is aware, and it'll be updated. All right, communications from other boards.
That would be me. Hi. Tim Murphy, 97 Island Road. Tonight, I am coming to you as a member and the Chair of the Town Manager Screening Committee. I am on that committee with Peter Beardmore, Matthew Brenner, Chris Menard, and Tom Alonso, and Peter Beardmore. And what I wanted to do tonight is kind of take us through the process that we've had. You all know what we've been up to, but I'm not sure everybody in town is as aware of it, so I just wanted to go through the process, because it's taken a while, and unfortunately, it has taken a while, but some things do take time. So, after Heather resigned, we started our process. Each board had to appoint a representative, so that took a little while for each board, and that's all designed by the Charter. We met and initially talked about the types of qualities that we would be looking for in the next town manager. On our second meeting, we just discussed whether or not we should seek professional help in recruiting, to see if we could find a benefit from having professional assistance. So then we had to reach out and try to find someone. We had interviewed with a, or met with a company. They told us the pros and cons and the benefits of having a recruiting firm, and by the time they were finished talking to us, we had decided that that sounded like something that would be a good management for us, and a good way to go forward. So then we had to go through the procurement process. We had to have Julie, the Assistant Town Manager, go through the process of going through procurement, then it has to be advertised, and then we have to wait for somebody to actually make the bids, and unfortunately, that just takes time. But once that process was finished, we were able to contract with a company called Community Paradigm. They come highly recommended by everybody that I've spoken to that's in the town manager type of business. So then we had to schedule a meeting with them, and they came in and sat and talked with us, and much to my chagrin, they told us at the very first meeting that it's a 14- to 16-week process for them to do all the work that they need to do before they would actually bring candidates before you. So, they have started their work, and as you know, and as the people at home will be hearing, they have interviewed everybody in town that is sitting on one of the major boards, like the Select Board, or is a major player, a major employee, a department head, and they had open meetings and invited people to come and speak with them. From there, they developed what they call a profile, and it was posted today on MMA's website, so if you want to see what they came up with. But it gives an overview of the town, an overview of the issues that are facing the town, and talks about the qualities and the attributes that we're looking for in our next town manager. It's important, I think, to know that those candidates will have to apply by November 18th, and from there, we will select, we'll review all of the applicants, and we will start interviewing on December 11th and 12th. So that's still a ways away, and even on November 11th and 12th, we're going to present new candidates, and then you have to interview, and conceivably, or probably, likely, hopefully, enter into negotiations with at least one candidate, or one candidate, and hire someone. So we're still a ways away from getting the process done, but it's an important process. It has to take time, and we have to do it right. And so that's kind of where we are in the process. An update for you, but also for the people at home, to know that we're still working on it. We are blessed, I think everybody says, by having Carter here steering the ship for now, but we are moving forward and hopefully can bring it to some conclusion by the end of the year.
Awesome.
Any questions? Nope?
All right, thanks for coming in, giving us the update.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thanks.
All right. We have no scheduled meetings tonight, no hearings, so we're going to jump down to appointments, ratifications, and resignations. We did have the ratification of the town manager's appointment of Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau as interim chief of police. However, we are pushing it back to next week because his wife isn't available tonight, and obviously, we want everyone to be here for that. But we did review and approve the contract, so that's all set to go, so we're going to do that next week. All right, and now interim town manager report.
We remained with a vacancy for which we're accepting applications for the administrative assistant position in the assessing office, and an assistant to the sewer business manager. We have conducted interviews for network administrator, and are reviewing those candidates over the next few days. We do have a candidate for sewer business manager interviewed by the DPW Director and several members of the Sewer Commission, and that candidate is being presented tomorrow night for ratification to the Sewer Commission. The town manager position, as you've just learned, was posted on the MMA site today, and we'll make some additional postings tomorrow along with, on our website, along with posting the position of the council on aging director. I may have been putting it off because I kept hoping if we didn't post it, maybe Sue would stay, but that's not going to work out. We are preparing the process and schedule for posting the police chief position, which we'll bring to you within the next two weeks. I want to thank Dave Passios for his passionate service to the Finance Committee, which has now ended with his resignation effective September 30th. The Chair signed a letter of thanks to him, and I also want to wish Evan Waters well, and give him thanks for his service and leadership on the Finance Committee, which ended with his resignation effective October 8th. The Finance Committee Appointing Committee will meet next Tuesday to consider candidates for appointment to the FinCom. With the untimely passing, I know this has been a little bit, but I've just learned about it, the untimely passing of Mr. Robert Conroy. We remain with a vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees. In memory of Mr. Conroy, the Library Board of Trustees has started a collection and will donate to the Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library, and they plan to create a small garden, interior garden outside the meeting room in his memory. So we have some positions vacant on the Agricultural Commission. I know they'd love the help to make sure that next year's event happens again. The Architectural Preservation District Commission, Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, and I believe it's a grant time in many communities this time of the year. The Finance Committee that we've just spoken about, the Green Communities Committee, Historical Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Master Plan Steering Committee, and we have tasked Mr. Riley, the new Land Use Director, with trying to reinvigorate that process and get that back on track. Public Access Cable Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Stormwater Task Force, which I embarrassingly left off this list. With respect to procurement, there wasn't a quorum last week for the Historical Commission, but we hope that they will be able to convene tonight to award the contract for the Lunenburg Historic Properties Survey. We do have the bids and have awarded the contract for the library exterior paint project, and we're collecting all of their documents, performance bonds, and the like, to execute that. DP Salt contracts, we're in that cooperative with Shrewsbury, that I think you're aware of. One of the two contracts is fully executed, and the other has been simply awaiting the vendors. We have the proposals for the tree-cutting services due this week, and we've not received any questions on that scope of work to date. And today, and yesterday, we had several walkthroughs for bids that are due on October 23rd. We had three contractors appear to review the DPW floor. That's blasting and a new epoxy where it's been damaged by the salt and the drainage and such off the trucks. We had one contractor show up as scheduled to look at the DPW roof. One showed up unscheduled. He'll have to bring his drone, but that does happen. We didn't have a walkthrough on the sewer manhole, that's simply a set of specs, but I have suggested that in the future, they still have a pre-bid conference, so contractors can come in and just ask any questions that they might have. The Municipal Building Design Committee went live today. Proposals are due November 4. The library teen room goes live tomorrow, and the town hall roof and chimney bids go live tomorrow. We've been trying to keep both Mr. Ritter and Ms. Bellevue busy. Coming down the pike yet, Ritter Building, that'll be two packages, as we're currently breaking it out. One for the roof gutters and trim, and then the windows. We've spoken to you about the likelihood of actually being able to fully fund the project, but we'll break it into packages and see where it lands, and that's also that sort of safety valve we've talked about on the ARPA of, as that gets closer. The staff did meet and work with Finance Director Julie, myself, and the IT folks on the RFP for payroll services. That's not on a state vendor list, so that does have to go out for an RFP. That may delay startup from January 1, where we'd originally thought we might be able to do it, to April 2nd. I try never to do anything on April 1st, but, but to miss that first quarter, so we've got to clean transition to the extent that we can. The award of the data collection services and the, I'll double-check with council tomorrow, but the 9/25 Mass Ave RFP's been with council for review for about a week or so now, so we'll double-check on that tomorrow. We'd like to move that along. I did attend the Board of Assessors, along with the Finance Director and Town Council. Mr. Alonso as their liaison was present. We explained the segregation of duties, the statutes and the Charter with respect to the authority of both, and the timeline for the revision to this new financial procedure. They did have some concerns, and I understand some of those, and I've asked the Finance Director to begin to develop. It'll be pretty straightforward. It's not a long process, but I just want him to chart out a workflow process, so we can submit that to the board and see what they have questions, and then we'll, we'll get them the next piece. We've got six months or so to do this, and we want to bring them along a step at a time. To my embarrassment, and regrettably, I missed the meeting of the Budget Task Force last night. We did want you to know that Governor Healy has announced the formation of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center Working Group. There's, that's quite a, quite a name. Representative Scarsdale's been active in advocating for the community, and has responded to the letter that we sent, and we'll keep you posted as that develops. We don't have any further word from the state on that initial press release that they sent that triggered the letter we brought before you, but at least having, I think this is a good step forward, making us a touch more comfortable that someone's listening beyond just the representative and the delegation. We'd like you to know that the proposed amendments to the SAP were circulated to all the relevant parties, as Julie deemed that. It went out to AD plus or minus folks for review. Intervening events today kept us from reviewing some of the comments that we received. We did receive a few comments on them, but we'll get that done tomorrow, as I meet with the Finance Committee Thursday evening. We did send you a draft warrant that will evolve a little bit yet, but if you could get me your comments, concerns, questions, I would appreciate that, as I'm meeting with the Finance Committee Thursday night. I'm going to stay here and do that physically. I just think that's more effective than phoning it in for the House.
Did you email it to us?
Yes, yes, and I'll...
Maybe like last week or something like that? I can forward it to you after, just in case.
Well, we've got a, I wouldn't, we've got a few more tweaks as a result of the last day or two of reviews. We met with Mark Terry on the SAP yesterday, we, hour and a half or so. There's a few things that came out of that. My apologies, just that intervening event that took our eye off the ball a little bit. But we'll get that out to you by noon tomorrow. And at that point, I believe that's, unless there's any questions on anything, the best I can tell you.
None for me?
None for me.
Any questions or comments?
No.
All right, thank you very much, Carter. All right, we're going to move on to old business, and I'm going to throw it back to you, Carter. Status update and discussion on ARPA.
I, I think it's, all I can say is, status quo, same as last week. We've got to get some of these bids in. We're about two weeks out from starting to get some of the bids in, and then it'll take shape from there. Absent firm pricing, I can't tell you anything more than I was able to tell you last week. We have a plan, and, you know, as these things evolve, we'll come in, and we have the interest money also to work with as a contingency. That can be expended after January 1. But we will be coming in next week to request a formal transfer of some of the monies to the Adult Activity Center roof, which came in 5K overbid. And the Milo system, we may need to match that a little bit. We'll see. The state vendor's actually more expensive than the GSA, the federal GSA. I'm just not sure we can use the federal GSA. I need to, need to do a little research on that.
All right. Any questions for Carter for ARPA at this point? Any other discussion we have on ARPA tonight? All right, sounds good. And moving on to current business, proposed amendments to the tax title policy and procedure. Carter, I'm going to let you introduce this one as well.
Sure. So, as I was looking at 9/25 Mass Ave, I spoke at the Finance Team about, were there other properties that had gone through the foreclosure process? And they were. They were also out of the one-year redemption period. So I asked the Treasurer to put that list together and to talk about the process that you have, and she referred me to the policy, and she spoke about the policy that you have of after town boards and commissions, she then comes to the board to see if you want to try to retain any of the properties for town use, requiring a town meeting vote, or you want to proceed to auction them. Now, there will be changes in the auction process as a result of recent state legislation, which deals with the court decision that says, if you sell the property for more than they owe you, up until 2022, you basically kept whatever there was. Now, you have to try to find the owner, remit the excess to them. I've never actually had this happen, where the value of the property was more than the taxes, but, and then if you can't find them, you have to send the money to the unclaimed property folks. And so I looked at the policies, my land is not in here. Well, yeah, but that's what we do. And as we've talked about procedures, I thought to myself, let's, let's bring this in front of the board and propose two changes. One has to do with not just a committee saying, yeah, we'd like it, but let's have a formal process by, yes, we'd like it, here's what we're going to use it for, here's what the cost would be to maintain it. Let's get a better handle of why the committees would like a piece of land. And then, once that is all done, this would put into your policy, the process I believe you're already following, which is, the treasure collector comes in and says, I went through notifying all the departments, here's the properties, here's I have my recommendation. Because frankly, if you lose your treasure collector and you lose their institutional knowledge, nobody would have known this. Now, I do want you to understand there will be changes to the process of selling these properties themselves. Auction may not be the right term after all that settles out, but I did want to propose a first reading, I guess you technically call it. I think your policy calls for two readings. I'm not sure exactly how you did it. Three readings?
No, school committee's three.
At least, yes.
Okay. But however, I just wanted to try to answer any questions on this. It has been reviewed by the Treasurer, by the Finance Director, and the Finance Team in their support of, of these proposed amendments. They were sent down to them for review before I sent them along to you.
Cool. Are there any questions or comments at this point?
I have a question. The bold portion is what's been added.
Yes.
Okay, so in the bold portion, it says, any department's boards committees may have an interest in retaining parcel for town use, and then it's on a form to be designed by them.
Because...
Who's "them"?
It refers to the treasure collector. I can change that to the treasure collector.
And do we have such a form?
No, she'll have to design it.
Okay. So that would accompany, that form would be in place and accompany this, I would hope.
Sure, we could do that. We can attach it to it.
Well, it'll be apt to be, it can be changed. We can see what the original one is, but they're just, the treasure collector has the ability to design the form that gets submitted to all the other boards and commissions, all that says.
Right, that, that gives them the authority.
They can change it at any time. It's under their authority.
If you want to attach it to the policy, then...
You could have a draft of a form, I think, just to complete this whole picture.
We'll get your, we'll get your draft, absolutely. And we'll change "them" to the treasurer's. Absolutely.
This is where I saw the "therefore," by the way, in the comma.
Oh, okay.
Missing the plan to manage the property, comma.
Yeah, but the reasons "therefore," it's missing an E.
Well, I would say that after that, on a form to be designed by them, I would, the next, the next sentence isn't a sentence, so we need to, starts with "which."
Well, would town council review this, I would think?
I hope, but I'm just acknowledging that that's not a sentence.
Yeah, there's something off with that sentence, so I think that comma just needs to be an "and."
Which should start with "such form."
Yeah.
That's, yeah, change "which" to "such form shall request not only the desire to retain the property, but the reasons therefore," with the extra E.
And then that comma should be an "and," "and the plan to manage the property," and the potential costs thereof, because there's only two things there.
Well, the plan to ma, no, it should, the comma's right, the plan to manage the property, and then it should be comma, and then "and the potential costs thereof."
There's three things.
Yeah, there's three things.
Oh, I see, okay. That's why. I always use Oxford commas for that reason, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Such request must be submitted within 30 days of the notification, yep. Otherwise, I am for this. Again, just... Again, just, not, this is really, not anything, but the for sale should probably be the same font as the rest of it.
Yeah, I noticed that too. One other thing.
But you have the good grace not to say anything, but I don't have.
Oh, I see.
I don't have such filters.
Yeah, we know. But for this one, I am actually gonna say it, because this is kind of like a nitpicky thing that I just don't really like. Select board should be like two words, you know, I don't really like when I see select board as one word like that.
That's, that's me, I'll try to break that habit.
Okay, that's fine. But yeah, I mean.
I'm for the, I, I, by the way, this is exactly the kind of thing that when it happens should be brought, and I appreciate you bringing that forward, because it really helps the process. And, you know, again, process oriented and documenting the process oriented, I truly appreciate you tuning into that and really addressing it, so thank you.
Yeah, these gaps need to be found and filled when we, as we find them.
They are, so we'll, we'll make these revisions, redline and have it in your packet next week. Do you take formal votes? I'm not.
We do, yeah.
Clear on, okay, so at the end, you'll take one final formal vote, is that, or do you take one at each reading? How do you?
No, no, we just do one at the end.
Okay. So we'll, we'll redline that and get that in your packet next week.
This would also give the other two members a chance to look at it.
Yes.
Totally. All right, awesome. Well, thank you for proposing this and putting the language together and working with everyone that you worked on to get this done. Thanks, Carter.
And let me just say that when documents come out, if a board member has any questions at all, as long as you don't send it to everybody, send them to us, and if we can start to make sense of them right away, we'll incorporate anything that.
Sure.
Yeah, as long as you just reply to you, you can always submit any feedback.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, cool. All right, thank you, Carter. And that's all for current business tonight. Moving on to minutes, warrants, and action items. So we have two sets of minutes, November 28th, 2023, and December 5th, 2023. Do you guys have an opportunity to read through them?
I did.
Yes. What do you guys think?
They're fine, the way they are.
Yep, I agree.
Again, stylistic thing, we've talked about member and then last name, but you don't need member, first name, last name, just member and last name.
Member and last name, okay.
There was one where I'm identified with first name. Two, again, it's very picky, but I'm not, I'm not gonna hold up the minutes.
I've asked Annie if I could have five minutes at the beginning of their working group tomorrow afternoon. I'd like to have them work on minutes as their priority. Because that's important across, no pun intended, the board.
Oh, there's two, okay.
Yeah, did you see that one? That one, that one there, your member.
I saw the member, Tom Alonso, I didn't see the member.
Member Mr. Alonso. Yeah, that's okay. All right, cool.
But, subject to that amendment.
What would be nice, and I'm sure they're out there, I have not done the research, but I'm sure if I typed it into Google, there must be something out there that basically outlines a framework for a standard format for us to do minutes, that everybody can really get and follow.
I think that if you traversed through a dozen town websites, you might well find a dozen different.
No, no, I agree. I'm not, I'm not saying that ours should be the same as other towns, I'm saying within our own town, the format should be the same for every board.
And that's, that's what I wanna address with that working group.
And I'm sure there are documents that do stylistic things and frameworks of how to do that.
Right.
Yeah, probably. All right, cool. Maybe that's also an action item. Could just look into that. I'll Google it. All right, so is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the minutes of November 28th, 2023, and December 5th, 2023, as presented.
Second. Would that be as corrected with the member and last name?
Yeah.
I don't think it.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, as they're, as they are currently in the Google Drive, that's fine.
Yep.
All right, any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes three unanimously, I was gonna say unanimously. All right. Warrants, we have one, we have an accounts payable, right? Yep. An accounts payable warrant in the amount of $115,843.64. Are there any action items?
I have maybe one that's also kind of a committee report, but it came up during school committee and then also during the Budget Task Force last night. The high deductible healthcare plan.
Yeah.
That Brian Leighton submitted, and he presented to FinCom, they seemed in support of it, school committee also. There is the PEC, the Public Employee, okay. So I don't know what the next step is, but if we can get, I don't, I don't know what the process is to get this option out there for employees, but.
I'll bring that up with the Finance Team tomorrow.
So far, everyone that's, that's heard it is in favor of it, it sounds like, so.
Yep, cool. Any other action items? All right, moving on to committee reports.
Okay, so school committee. These meetings are longer than ours. So the Director of Facilities and Grounds, Mr. Heavy, has submitted his resignation. They currently, I believe, have the job posted by now. They approved the second CRO, Officer Cameron Monroe, who will be at the Turkey Hill Primary They are beginning to explore alternatives for getting out of TCP. And lots of alternatives were discussed, and the superintendent will be, begin looking into, into different options and presenting them to the school committee. The 9/11 upgrade, so that is scheduled to start this last week and be done in about four weeks. It's the recabling of the building for the 9/11 upgrade.
For, what is that?
The 9/11 compliance of phones system in Turkey Hill.
The 911, not 911.
911, sorry.
9/11 means one thing.
I know, I'm used to saying 9/11, 911 compliance.
It's like, I've never heard of that, what is that? Sorry, go ahead.
That's the phone upgrade. The Turkey Hill ADA study, so they had their optional site visit last week, week before. They had about 15 people, very enthusiastic people, were there for a long time, took pictures of everything, they were really pleased with the turnout, so the bids are due October 16th. And their, their timeline is to get the final report by April 29th. Phase one is ADA compliance and phase two is life cycle of major systems. The security upgrade, so these are the doors, the asbestos report is back and has been given to the engineers. They are meeting with the engineers October 16th, so the engineers have a revised proposal based on the results of the asbestos report, and they are shooting to get out to bid mid-November. There was an FY26 budget discussion, they talked about priorities. And they discussed, this came up at the Budget Task Force as well, pulling out healthcare from the school budget and put it under the town. There was a lot of discussion around that, and they set their goals for FY25. And Budget Task Force last night, we talked about the idea of having a forensic accounting for the town. So a deeper dive. The Chair, Tony Scolimbrini, is going to look into that a little more. The expectation is it would be very expensive, and the question is, what would we get out of it?
So is this essentially an audit?
No, it's, it's a deeper dive into, it's, it's really forensic level, where is this money, why do you see this drop? We've, we've found like one fund, one line in DLS dropped overnight, 2016, it dropped, we don't know, it's a, it's a very nondescript line item. We don't know exactly.
The non-recurring.
Where it came from.
Yeah.
The miscellaneous, non-recurring.
Right.
Line. And, and we've lost so many people who, the, the, the knowledge that has left town in the last two years is, you know, institutional knowledge is gone, and, and a lot of people who are, who have joined are relatively new and just don't know the history and don't know some of these answers, so. The healthcare I mentioned, we talked a bit about, you know, trying to consolidate IT grounds with school and town. Didn't come with a concrete, anything that was concrete to try to save money or efficiency there. We're working, the next meeting is the two weeks from yesterday, 21st. And we're gonna be working on the presentation for the special town meeting, so Ezzy and Tony will be presenting just a short update, kind of a punch list of what we have found so far. And Evan was on the Budget Task Force, he was FinCom rep, so we've lost him. Jean Russell was the alternative, alternate from FinCom, so hopefully she'll be able to join us the next meeting.
I will say, in terms of the forensic accounting, something that I have heard quite a bit of people say to me in the past few months is that we really need to do a deep dive audit. So, just putting that out there. That's something that I've heard.
Well, we do have an audit firm that does it for the state, for us, every year. I think that what was basically illustrated by big drops in money, and I've said this all along, and it may be in some of the reports, I've said this, that when there are obvious changes, large deltas, plus or minus, in any line item of the budget, there needs to be a legend that goes with that to explain for posterity why that is, so that this doesn't happen. Now, sometimes those explanations happen during the budget cycle when town manager presents to the FinCom or to the select board, and you may be able to find that information. I mean, it seems a little bit not worth the value. The, the cost of getting something forensically in there would probably be astronomical compared to researching and asking people who have worked for the town even in a congenial email, do you remember what this is, because they may or may not. So.
What was the year again that that?
2016.
16, yeah, yeah.
Drop. Um, I think if we were to pursue something like this, we'd have to go, like, the RFP would have to have very specific questions, like, it's gotta be very well defined and really limited, keep some bounds on it, because the hourly cost that Tony was quoting me made me think I went into the wrong field.
Yeah. Well, there you go. So. Most of my committee reports were addressed graciously by other people tonight, so Town Manager Screening Committee was done by our Chair and Moderator, Mr. Murphy. That is now posted for the Town Manager position, and the, the position statement is out there. Mr. Terenzini mentioned both the Board of Assessors meeting, which I attended, and he reviewed that meeting, and also that the Finance Committee, Appointment Committee, will be meeting before this meeting next Tuesday to interview candidates for the now, you know, multiple, I think, three vacancies on that board. And then tomorrow is the Capital Planning Committee will be meeting at 6:30 at the Ritter, will be getting presentations from the IT Department and the Police Department. So that's the beginning of our season.
Cool. Council on Aging met this morning, so covered a lot of things. The first thing that was mentioned, a public comment, and also because the recording didn't work, so I think only the last few minutes of it were actually recorded, so it didn't get out to people. But the list of the Boston Post-Cane recipients from, it's beginning in 1909 to, I don't remember the exact cutoff date, I think it was sometime in the 60s, is missing. And they're having a hard time finding the history, because they want a full list of all the recipients. So it's pretty much a call to action for anyone in the public who may be listening who might know some of the history of the Boston Post-Cane recipients. If you have that, reach out to the Council on Aging so that you can help them put all that together, Pete Lincoln more specifically. They were talking about putting the full history on the website. They discussed the warrant articles, so there's gonna be two relevant Council on Aging warrant articles at Special Town Meeting, one relating to Mark Connect and the meal site revolving fund. Let's see what else. They talked about their budget requests as well, so one of them that has been in the talks for a long time is the increase in hours for the meal site manager position from 19.5 to 26, something that they've been trying to get done for a long time, and a small increase in the program line so that they can offer more and just not rely on the gift income that they get that isn't as stable. They also discussed, and this is something that I wanna bring up to the board too, so they have, well, they don't have, there's a 501(c)(3) called, I think it's Eagle House Supporters or something like that, that is dissolving. And first of all, they wanna move that money into the Council on Aging Gift Fund, but also what they wanna do is, because that's on the town side, right, anything that they get would then have to be approved by the Select Board, because we have to.
Accept the gift.
Accept the gifts, that's right, accept, not approve. So instead of us having to do that all the time, whenever they get any sort of donations or anything, they were wondering if we would be able to basically, if they have a plan for what they're gonna use it for, sort of like an operational budget, planning the type, the amount of money that they would get in a year, if we could just do like one blanket approval, pretty much. So I wasn't too sure about that, but it was something that they discussed that we would have to look into to see if we could do.
Not really sure I followed what they're asking, like, they want us to accept a gift of a certain amount before we have the gift, is that what they're asking for?
Maybe that's one way of putting it, kind of.
Yeah.
I can get more clarification exactly how they would like to do that, but just so that we're, you know, not constantly accepting the gifts to that, I think is really the goal. But we can sort of discuss that offline to figure out logistically how that could or could not work. And I think that's pretty much it. All right. Upcoming meetings, we'll be meeting next Tuesday and the following Tuesday, October 15th and October 22nd. I also plan on scheduling a meeting on the last Tuesday of the month to have a policy workshop, so we can really start getting into the nitty gritty on some of our goals as well. Public comment, are there any public comments from the interim town manager?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any public comment from the public? Mr. Burden?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to address the question about, well, the, the comments about the audit. As you know, I requested an audit over a year ago, on January 9th, 9th of 2024. Basically, we held a meeting and, and kind of mentioned it, persecuted my family, questioned why I would request for an audit, financial, financial information and so forth. That was a, basically some comments that were made by Mr. Jeffries to me directly about the school and, and funds being moved to the police and so forth. That's my concern and was concerns around that. We also have some concerns about money being put into the Public Access Committee, that that committee, that commission or whatever that is, we've seen a lot of increases there and kind of curious of what all that money's going to. So, very helpful, I guess, in understanding that and hearing that, and hopefully you can get a forensic account, and I think it's very much needed in this town. And I, just to let you know, I got an accounting background, so I've seen some things that look very strange myself, so just bringing that up.
All right, thank you for your public comment, Mr. Burden. I don't see anyone else in the public, so I'm just gonna move to public comments from the board.
I have none.
All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. It is 7:48 PM, and the Select Board has adjourned. Thank you all for tuning in from home, and we will see you here next week.
Recording.